Okay, the adoption of the agenda. It is recommended that the agenda of the January tenth, two thousand and twenty-two regular meeting of the Board of School Trustees be approved as presented. May I get a motion? I'll make a motion.
I'll second.
Janet will motion. Chris will second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, same. Motion carries five oh. Approval of the minutes. It is recommended that the minutes of the December thirteenth, two thousand and twenty-one regular board meeting be approved as presented. May I get a motion?
Motion.
George will motion. May I get a second?
I'll second.
Janet will second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, any opposed, same. Motion carries five oh. Election of the Board of School Trustee Officers, Board of Finance member, and appointment of committees for year of two thousand and twenty-two. Does anybody have a recommendation for the president?
I would like to nominate our vice president to the position of president.
So you're gonna make a motion?
Yeah, I'm moving to do that.
Okay, may I get a second?
I'll second.
Okay, Chris will second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, same?
Aye.
Aye. Is there another recommendation?
I recommend Janet Sturmer as board president.
So you're making a motion?
I'm motioning that Janet Sturmer, board president.
George is making a motion for Janet Sturmer as the board president. May I get a second? I will second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed, same?
Nay.
Okay, motion carries three two. Okay, vice president, who? Does anybody have a motion for vice president?
A motion for Melissa to be vice president.
Janet is motioning Melissa to be vice president. Can I get a second?
I'll second.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, any opposed, same?
Nay.
Nay.
Motion carries two oh.
What was that again, for the record?
Motion carries, oh, sorry, three to two, sorry. My, my error. Okay, secretary. Anybody want to make a motion for secretary position?
I'll nominate Matt Thunner.
I am not interested in it, thank you.
That motion for Chris to be secretary.
Janet makes a motion for Chris Brown as the secretary. Can I get a second?
I'll second that.
George will second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, any opposed, same? That motion carries five oh.
And if it's fine, we switch.
Okay. Okay, so next is Corporation Treasurer. Can I get a motion for Melissa Davis to continue being our Corporation Treasurer?
Motion.
So George motions, can I get a second? I'll second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Melissa Davis will continue as our Corporation Treasurer. And then the next is a legislative liaison for the ISBA. Is anyone interested in that?
I move that we continue to keep Chris Brown in that role. He served that role well, so I make that move.
I'd like to second that, he did do good on that. Alright, so for Chris to continue being our liaison for the ISBA. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, any opposed? So motion carries five oh. And then the Victor Moore Scholarship nomination for, to be on that committee.
What does that consist of?
Whenever I was on it, I just communicated with Mallory there at the high school, and she would just inform if there was any changes or anything like that, there's no, nothing.
I'll do it.
I'll nominate George.
Okay, so Chris motions to nominate George for the committee, any, can I get a second? I'll second. And all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? So that one carries five oh. Negotiating, negotiation committee. Would they be negotiating, that's, since we have two-year contract, is that even, so that's not necessary? So can we just not worry about that one this year? Or just keep Matt on?
I would go ahead and keep Matt on it, I mean, he needs to make a recommendation for Matt.
I'll, I'll recommend Matt.
Alright, so Chris is gonna recommend Matt to stay on that for this year. Can I get a second?
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? So that carries five oh. And then we have the Spencer County Redevelopment Commission as a non-voting member. I think Matt did that as well.
Number eight needs to be clarified and revisited because it is not the Spencer County Redevelopment Commission.
It's the Rockport, right?
It's the Rockport Redevelopment Board as a non-voting member. And yes, I've served on that and attended regularly.
So change that to the Rockport Redevelopment Commission?
Board.
Or the Board.
As long as that's what is being requested, if there's not a-
Because there is a Spencer County Redevelopment Commission as well, so we have any representation. Do you need to have form of motion?
So yes, so we're gonna-
Make a motion.
Motion to keep Matt on the Rockport Redevelopment Board. Any second? All in favor of that?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? And so that carries five oh. Alright, and then do we have statements from the public? We have Jill Kelly.
Do I come up there? Good evening. Hi.
Hi.
I would like to talk about the mask requirements for all students and why we have made that mandatory. Have you thought about the possibility of parents enrolling their children in our school from the tri-state because we didn't conform? We took a stand and made decisions that other schools were too scared to make. You have that power. What will the next step be after you allow the health department to beat you down so bad? And you feel their threats, fear their threats so much? What will their next recommendation be that you will cower down to? A teachers' union, the teachers' union. What will their next requirements be when they make their next threats? It will happen. When will you say, no, we will not conform? Or will you conform? What will you do when the parents call your bluff? We don't want to do that. We don't want to take our kids out. We, I'm gonna speak for myself, I completely love the local schools, the public schools, and what they support. Please know, we are prepared to pull our children out of the public schools and take control of our children's education. Indiana is one of the best states in the country for homeschooling opportunities, and we also have private schools as another option. We have done our research, we know how much money you receive per child. Why aren't you making decisions based off of common sense? What are the students learning from this? It is teaching them to be sheep, to not ask questions, to not think it through, and to just do what they are told. Even worse, if they try to take a stand because they know none of this makes sense, they're, could be sent to the office, removed from school, or threatened, that it will be on their permanent record. What will happen if we refuse to mask our children? Are you able to answer questions, or no?
It's not a question to answer.
Okay, so just what will happen if the parents say, no, we're not gonna do that? We should be raising future leaders, young adults who ask questions and aren't afraid to stand up and speak if something is wrong. But the leaders around them are not doing this. How fast will the students lose respect for the school leaders? Let's hope it's not already too late. I propose stop making masks mandatory, let it be a choice and stop conditioning the students to be fearful sheep. I understand there is a group of people that would love for everyone to wear masks because they believe in an imaginary protection, but that isn't reality. That group cannot expect for everyone to believe in their health cult. Let them wear masks, but don't make the other group conform. I'm almost done. Ephesians six, chapter six, ten through seventeen paraphrase says that we do not fight against people, but we fight against hosts of wickedness. And it says in verse thirteen, "Take up the whole armor of God, that you may be able to stand in the evil day. And having done all to stand, you must stand anyway." If you and I are not going to fight for our children, who will?
Thank you, Ms. Kelly. Alright, then we have the superintendent's report.
We did go with masks, not to answer, but to answer as well. We met with our administrative team, met with the teachers, the discussion group of the teachers, to discuss pros, cons, which direction we're gonna go. We did listen to the health department, we listened to the Indiana Department of Health as well. You know, we talked about different avenues to go. One avenue was to go, you know, masking all the time, and that was not a direction we wanted to go as a corporation. We have been down this path before. We don't like this path at all. Our goal, we've been told, depends on who you listen to, we've been told, you know, this is a surge, and coming back from Christmas break, everybody being around each other, we just kinda want to protect us. Our ultimate goal is to keep the students in class. Also, we also want to keep our faculty and staff, you know, present as well. We do not want to close down our schools at all. To do that, it was kind of like a compromise. We did it where, okay, before school, after school, anytime you can't social distance, then you have a mask on. Soon as you get in a classroom, you have social distance, then take your mask off. So our goal was to do this for a couple of weeks. If it's sooner than later, we will do that. We will look at our numbers, we're gonna analyze, we analyze our numbers every day. If it's before January twenty-eighth, that would be great. If not, we're looking at January twenty-eighth to be visiting, and then hopefully starting January thirty-first, and then go back to normal. We do want to keep all of our events open as well. We don't want to get to that point where if we have a surge, we have a large number of staff out, or students out who are quarantined as well, and then we might have to do some more drastic measures, we don't want to do that. So that's kind of where we were at with that decision. I do want to say, go ahead.
Are the numbers, what, what do the numbers look like versus pre-Christmas break to now? Are the numbers increasing, or does that, did that two-week period kind of slow things down amongst our four buildings?
When you come back from a break, well, historically speaking, when you come back from a break and everybody's spending around each other, that is the time for it to come back in. It's not as much in the buildings as it is everybody bringing it back from where they've been. So numbers are not large right now, and that's good. And if those numbers continue to stay low, then we'll be opening up the masks. When I say mask mandate again, before school, after school, only when you can't social distance, and that would be it. Yeah, the ultimate goal is just, let's get through this. We don't know for sure, like, that's what we're told, that the Indiana Department of Health, everybody else, there's just a big surge right now. Let's get us through this next couple of weeks, and let's drop it.
Spencer County is still on the orange, correct? We haven't moved up to the red?
No, it'll come out tomorrow afternoon. I mean, for the public, it'll come out Wednesday.
Okay.
And that doesn't always dictate everything with us, because, you know, the county could be red, but our numbers are looking good. So we'll look at our numbers, not just the county numbers. So that doesn't dictate everything we do. And again, everything we can, just to keep everybody safe, and to keep our schools open.
Who are you involved in that decision-making process?
This time, I mean, like I said, we, health department, our administrative team, that includes our head nurse as well. And then also, we discussed it with our teachers as well, the discussion team with our teachers. We did that last Tuesday, before we went forward. So that was kind of like a unified decision. Is everybody loving the mask? Absolutely not. The big thing with the teachers was definitely not in the classroom, especially at the lower grades, it makes it real, it's a challenge for the lower-grade teachers to teach, you know, with the night, fentanyl. So, so that's like the reason why we did not go with all.
Can I tell you? The highest number in Spencer County is twenty and under, number of cases, and a fourth of the population has had it or has it pregnant in Spencer County.
So now is the surge. We just want to get past the surge, and then, hey, just drop it after.
So you mentioned a couple of weeks, are we going till the end of January? Are we going week by week? So you are saying January twenty-eighth?
January twenty-eighth, it's our, that's our day to make sure we visit. Not before. I would much rather say the twenty-eighth, if it's before, then it's before. But I'd rather say the twenty-eighth. We revisit it every week, or almost every day, we look at it, we do look at it every day.
So they're not, the, the students in all four buildings are not wearing a mask in the classroom, just on the buses, passing in the hallway?
Before school, after school, correct, and in the hallways, correct. Unless they want to wear a mask, and then they have the option, they can wear a mask as well. And Jill said it right. I mean, there are people who want us to wear a mask all the time. I mean, so it's, it's, it's tough. And, and bottom line is, is trying to just keep our kids safe and keep them in school as well. And when I say kid, that's also our community members as well, we just don't want to be in those.
Are the numbers staying, compared to last week? Since we, we started school back up last Monday? Have they, are the numbers staying flat? Or are they, are they increasing a little bit?
It increased a little bit, correct, from last week. That's the net we've seen in the past though, which is good. That's what we don't, I mean, we're not looking at, our numbers are low right now, and that's what we want to stay. We just want to keep them low, and let's move on. The quarantine has helped, you know, with the five days. And then, you know, if you're vaccinated, you get five days out, and then you come back within months. So, I mean, that has helped a lot too, you know, without this, and the third-in-paid quarantine. So that's been good for us. And our staff as well, because we've had a couple of staff who've been quarantined. But then usually they're back within five days, wear a mask, and good.
But that's my big concern, is I'm, I'm concerned about our staffing, being in quarantine, not being able to come in because we're short-staffed anyways, and trying to find substitutes. We struggle with that. That is my, my big concern is that right now. Not necessarily the masking in the classroom or anything. If it was up to me, I wouldn't, I would drop the mask, period. But due to quarantine, and if our teachers get it, I just don't want to put our, any of our buildings in that situation.
And like, again, that's the only reason we're doing it now. That's one of the reasons, is to make sure we don't get to that point.
And did you have something, Chris Brown?
I do want to say thanks to, you know, the custodians, maintenance staff, everybody else, even high school students. It snowed the other day, and that caught us off-guard, big time caught us off-guard. We are very thankful, everybody pulled together. You know, you try to make, the high school, I felt like, made lemonade out of lemons. You know, they brought all the high school students in that drove, you know, went out, they started their car, they came back up, Mr. Bush, you know, what do you do, you know, when you drive in snow? You know, making sure your windshield wipers, you know, kind of like the life lesson, you know, what you're gonna have. So, every student called in to the school, and I don't know, you know, whether they left early or after school, if they got home safe. So we were able to account for everybody, and then, same way with our faculty and staff, each one of our faculty and staff members as well, checked in with their principal, and then kind of coordinated it back to me as well, just to make sure we got everybody all the same. So, yeah, not a good situation at all. It's a very tough situation, but at least everybody got home safe. We do have our latest missile on Friday for professional development at one o'clock. No school on Monday. And at this time, J.T. Kinkle, J.T. Kinkle Architects is going to speak to us regarding the football bleachers, the press box, the LED light project that was kind of slated for this summer. He'll tell you more about that, and then also combining that with our softball, baseball hitting facility as well. So, J.T.
Thank you. Good evening. As Dr. Rutherford said, my name's J.T. Kinkle, I'm with Jack R. Kinkle and Son Architects. And we've been working on the new press box, grandstands, bleachers, lighting, and football field. As we got started on that project, we ran into what everybody's hearing now, supply chain problems. Essentially, we learned that if you're going to have a grandstand with a press box, the lead time for ordering to its installation is approximately thirty-two weeks right now. So we would have had to have the project bid, contracted, completely ready, basically by mid-November of twenty-one. So once that didn't happen, it gave us the ability to step back, look at the project, and possibly the, the other projects that have been discussed, and say, well, why don't we rethink this? And maybe if we combine these, we'll get a better economy of scale, we might have more contractors interested, and it'll give us the time to do the due diligence to, to put together possibly a better project. So that's what we have decided is the best course of action. And so at this point, what we're doing is we're, we're looking at the scope of the project again, revisiting it, in order to have the project out for bids again, or, it never made it up for bids, pardon me, but to have it out this May, mid-May, so we don't miss any of these deadlines. And the considerations are that it might include this baseball softball hitting facility, concession area. While we're already tearing things up to put these new bleachers and grandstands in, it makes a lot of sense to not put in new work that only might get destroyed during the construction of those, those improvements. So currently, we're working with the staff to, to come up with the best program and what that project scope will be. I guess, to have it out in May. I hear a very loud clock ticking in my head to get that ready. But that's, that's what Dr. Rutherford and Dean are, are helping me with. Are there questions I could answer?
I don't have any at this time.
I think the only question that I had, and I think I hinted to you before the meeting when you introduced yourself to me, was in regards to the location of the hitting, of this facility, and the elevation, and how much dirt work and groundwork is involved. That area that we're talking about is prone to flooding and so forth. A lot of, talking about a lot of earth movement there in regards to, do you have any idea of how much, or what type of process we're looking at?
We have only recently received the topographic survey.
Yep.
So that has to be taken into consideration. We're also planning on getting geotechnical borings in that area to make sure that we, we don't get into bad soils. But that's, as we go through the program and talk about how big that building needs to be, it may affect where it is best positioned on the site. And to your point, we don't want to put it low, we don't want to make it in a flood-prone area. So we'll have to, you know, those are all the things that we have to take into consideration into the, our design.
Have you built these before?
Yes.
Can they be multi-purpose enough to use as archery facilities and things of that nature as well?
They, they can. We, so, when you have the hitting facilities, usually they have cages?
Right.
Separated batting cages, those can be raised and lowered. There are certain things that, that you are constrained to in the building, but I'm sure that, if the right preparations are made.
Right, typically, has anybody put that into the consideration, one of those type of projects?
I have not worked on archery in one of these projects.
I think Mark Oveley does that.
Of course, I am.
But if that's gonna happen, we definitely want to talk about it, because that does, make sure we have the right back stops and safety.
Batting beds, they can either be raised, or they can slide down the cables.
Just depending which type you, you work with.
Yeah.
Sliding or the raise, for the rest. Any other questions back and forth?
Thank you.
Thank you so much, appreciate your time.
Thank you. So now to consent items. Approved the payroll claim documents and the accounts payable claims, number fifty-five-seven, the fifty-seven oh, or fifty-two oh one. Approved the treasurer's financial report. Accept the resignation of the following, approve to post the positions and grant permission to hire. Emily Gilmore, high school chemistry teacher, effective this past January second. Steve Waltham, bus driver, effective December twenty-first of two thousand and twenty-one. Samantha Beatty, head softball coach, effective December fourteenth, two thousand and twenty-one. Alexis Shelton, South Spencer Middle School Special Needs Aid, effective January seventeenth, two thousand and twenty-two. And then approve the out-of-state overnight transportation request for the high school choir and rebel singers to the Kentucky Center for the Arts in Louisville on February seventeenth, and the choir and rebel singers to Kings Island in Mason, Ohio on May seventh. So can I get a motion to approve the consent items? A motion? Can I get a second?
I'll second.
All those in favor of approving the consent items?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries five oh.
I want to step in there real quick. We do have our student of the month here.
Oh, oh, yes.
Cast that up, we were talking about that. So at this time, Mr. Franks, would you introduce our student of the month?
Sorry.
No, I was one hundred percent in the, sorry about that.
Appreciate you getting us in here. So students of the month at the middle school are those kids that, you know, teachers and staff look at that have basically done everything asked of them. They're, they're well-behaved, they work hard each and every day. You know, they might be a straight-A student, they may not, but the big thing is, they bring it every day, that they're setting good examples and doing what they need to, to help build, you know, just that better, that climate and culture, you know, at the school. So, we have sixth grade, seventh grade, and eighth grade nominees each month, starting in September. So I'm gonna read the names, I saw several of you walk in. So when I read your name, if you would just, maybe just come stand up here on the towel area until we're done, just so everybody can, just kind of give you some recognition. So, September sixth graders, Laney Sabinfield and Matthew Wohammus. September seventh graders, Madeline Bowlin and Jude Small. September eighth graders, Kylie Donahoe and Riley Roth. October, sixth grade, Madeline Harperdom and Quentin Chapman. Seventh grade, Hadley McGee and Gavin Burgess. Eighth grade, Aubrey Erps and Brandon Van Horn. November students of the month, sixth grade, Laney Wells and Jacek Miller. Seventh grade, Brianna Hurley and Roland Powers. Eighth grade, Olivia Hall and Jayden Smith. December, sixth grade, Olivia Matthews and, and Brady Adamick. Seventh grade, Michaela Veach and Landon Gunner. And eighth grade, Emma Newman and Robbie Burrows. So these are our first semester students of the month at the middle school. A lot of the names that, uh, were mentioned and not here are involved in events tonight, but definitely appreciate you all coming out tonight, so thank you.
Front page.
Everybody, just hold on, I'll pull your mask out.
Yeah, pull your mask.
Oh, I've already sent it to you.
You got it.
Already sent it to you.
I will email you to confirm with your names. Thank you. John, hold on, guys. Thank you.
Okay, and then for the high school, we also do student of the month, and we do, um, character traits as well. We do those for three months. We do those for September, October, and November. And then, again, very similar to what the middle school does with Mr. French, um, teachers nominate and teachers vote on this. Once a student has, um, been selected as a freshman, then they are not eligible again until their senior year. So that, you know, gets more students involved in that type of thing, and then once they come back in as seniors, then we start all back over again with, uh, with all the students. So we select a male and a female, boy and girl, for each grade, for seniors, juniors, sophomores, and freshmen. And so, I'm, I'm gonna read the names of the students of the month first, and then I'll read the character trade award winners after that. So, um, for September, um, our two seniors, Hannah Lindsay and Matt Kestner. Juniors, Tyuta Decker and Landon Wells. Sophomores, Ashley Will and Dawson Rogers, and the freshmen, Lizzie Damon and Ty Brown. So again, if we have anybody who, um, if, if you're here, if you came out, and again, we got a lot of kids involved in different things, I see a couple. But, uh, if your name is called, just stand up where you are, okay, so we can recognize you whenever your name is called, please. Um, for October, um, seniors, Caitlin Tindall, Jacob Morgan. Juniors, Kelsey Cameron, Dane Wheatley. Sophomores, Kalia Taylor, Erin Denham. And freshman, Haley Britton and Seth Becker. For the month of November, students of the month, our seniors were J.C. Jarboe and Ashton Tindall. Juniors, Brittany Ward, Shane Taylor. Sophomores, Haley Brown and Wilson Willard. And freshman, Abby Roth and Zane Works. Okay, so, thank you very much. And then character trade awards. Uh, for the month of August was Respect, and the two recipients there were Hannah Lindsay and Lane Chapman. For the month of September, those were Leadership, that was Skylar Young and Jackson Roth. For the month of October, we have Integrity, that was Trinity Britton and Zach Hamilton. And for the month of November, that was Gratitude, and that was Ashley Will and Garen Kenny. So, thank you. Ms. Skylar, if you would stand up, please. Skylar Young, um, has just done an outstanding job for us. Her resume list is longer than mine already, okay? The things that she has been involved in and the things that she has done has been truly amazing. She was the runner-up for the Lilly this past year, which is a tremendous award to be able to receive that. And she is also recipient of a full ride scholarship to Columbia University in New York City. Good. And then the last thing I want to mention, whenever we talk about character and stuff, um, Dr. Rutherford, um, mentioned this earlier. Um, on Thursday, whenever we had students who were not, um, allowed to go to, um, Evansville for the tech school, we had some students who stuck around with a young man, young man by the name of Spencer Byers. And Spencer came up and said, "Mr. Bush," he said, "I'm doing nothing. I can't go to school. Can I go out and shovel sidewalks?" So this young man, on his own, for two hours, went out, shuffled snow, and cleaned off cars, and did all kinds of cool stuff. So Spencer Byers, I wanted to throw his name out there too. All right?
Okay. All right, so now to the administrative recommendations. Upon the recommendation, the superintendent approved the employment of Barbara Brez, five-and-a-half-hour cook, starting January third of twenty twenty-two. Can I get a motion?
I move that we hire Barbara Brez to that position.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries five oh. Um, upon the recommendation, the superintendent approved the employment of Becca Rutherford, interim high school chemistry teacher, starting January third of twenty twenty-two.
I'll make a motion.
Was that Chris?
Yes.
Okay. So Chris made a motion. Is there a second?
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion carries five oh. I'm sorry, any opposed? Okay, motion carries five oh. Number three, upon the recommendation of the superintendent, approve the employment of Jake Barkley for the middle school track team, starting this twenty twenty-two season. Can I get a motion?
I make a motion that we employ Jake Barkley as middle school track team for his twenty-two season.
And then a second?
I'll second.
And then, can I get a vote? All of those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries five oh. Upon the recommendation, the superintendent approved the employment of Justice Taylor as the South Spencer High School softball head coach, starting twenty twenty-two season.
I'll motion.
Can I get a second?
I'll second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries five oh. Um, and then, the last one here, upon the recommendation, the superintendent approved the employment of Renee Stevens as the South Spencer Middle School remediation monitor, pending clear background check. Can I get a motion?
I'll motion.
Melissa motions, and a second?
I'll second.
Chris seconds. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries five oh. And then we have new business of the board. First one, under the recommendation, the superintendent approved the twenty twenty-two school board meeting time of six P.M., and meeting dates as follows, and change the school calendar to match. Um, so I know the original dates that we had was the second Monday, but there's one change on, in October, from the tenth to the seventeenth. Is there a reason?
Fall break.
Okay, so fall break is the
Week before that.
The week before that on the tenth, okay. So all of them listed are the second Monday of the month, um, except for October moves to the third. Can I get a motion to approve the dates?
I'll motion.
Both motions and a second?
I'll second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Number two, upon the recommendation, the superintendent approved to renew the corporation's liability insurance with the effective date of January one, twenty twenty-two, and the expiration date of January one, twenty twenty-three, prepared by Educational Service Center's Risk Funding Trust. Can I get a motion to approve that?
I'll motion.
And a second?
I'll second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? So that carries and is approved, five oh. Number three, upon the recommendation, the superintendent approved the contract with Five Star Technology Solutions for Technology Engineering Services. Can I get a motion to approve that contract?
After agreeing it, I will make a motion to approve that.
And a second?
I'll second.
George was second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? So that's approved, five oh. And then number four, upon the recommendation, the superintendent approved the annual copy or print or maintenance agreement with Hoosier Business Machines as presented.
I'll make a motion.
George motions and a second?
I'll second.
Melissa will second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? So that motion carries five oh. Upon the recommendation, the superintendent approved to proceed with combining the twenty twenty-two football bleacher project with the twenty twenty-three hitting facility project, both to be completed in twenty twenty-three. The existing professional services agreement with Jack R. Kinkle and Son Architects, P.C., will be revised and submitted for approval by the board at a later date once the new scope of work is finalized.
Do we have the ability to recover funds from this year to help?
Yes.
I'll make a motion.
So Chris motions to approve. Can I get a second?
I'll second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? So that motion carries five oh. And then we have the information items, which were written reports to the board, the technology report, maintenance report, transportation report, and the new volunteers report. And then, are there any statements concerned of the board?
I do have a concern or a statement. Um, have we have, have we received any interest, letter of interest, besides Foster regarding the attorney? When are we going to plan on, um, approving the, um, school board attorney?
Make a motion.
I would, I mean, I know, as far as I know, I've only received one, um, and that was Foster, um, a local attorney.
Typically, that's done between the president and the superintendent. They get together, meet, and post it for a timeframe so that every attorney has the opportunity to, to express interest. I don't know if that's been done.
Can we go ahead and, um, post the position and then meet one day next week? Um, give it seven days to vote?
I have no problem with Mr. Foster. I think he's a very honest and fair individual, straight shooter, but, uh...
Do we, do we even do that, or can we just make a motion to hire him?
The only reason why, if you, if somebody else was interested, that would be the only thing. It's just to cover our bases, just to make sure if there's somebody else local that wanted to, I'd hate to just say, hey, we open it from, yeah, we can post that.
Post that, and then, um...
We can send it, we can even send it out.
Have a meeting next Thursday? Give it seven days. Would that be sufficient?
I'd at least give it ten. I mean, if you're gonna send something out, give them a little bit of time to think about it.
Next Monday.
That'd be seven days, is that right? So, I'd say you look at the calendar, look at your schedule real quick and see if you want to do it that way.
Twenty, be ten days, or do it on the twenty-fourth?
Twenty, we'll do twenty.
Did you say twenty, and do it the twenty-fourth, or Chris, what did you say?
Yeah, P. one.
Okay, the twentieth would be, would be fine. Can we, can I request to have it like at an earlier time, because my daughter has a swim meet that day?
If, if everybody can make it.
The twentieth I'm out, that evening.
Okay.
I'm gonna be escorting her to kiddos.
Um, with, like, the Wednesday, or the Friday?
Friday would be good, anytime.
The twenty-first?
What time?
Um, anytime Friday would work for me.
Chris?
Say, anytime after three-thirty, for me.
Okay, we'll do Friday, on Friday at four, on the twenty-first.
At the corporation.
I think that'd be easier.
Okay.
Okay, so we're gonna get this posted tomorrow.
Yeah, we'll get it posted soon.
Um, see if anyone else is interested, maybe on the twenty-first at four o'clock at the corporation office. All right, any other statements or concerns of the board? Okay, our next meeting date will be February fourteenth here in the One My Burke's Room at the high school. Adjournment time is six forty-seven. Can I get a motion to approve that?
I'll motion.
And a second?
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries five oh.
Students of the parents, thank you for coming out.